All meeting. All meeting order, first item on the agenda, consideration of meeting minutes for March twenty third, twenty twenty two. Anybody have any changes? So I noticed the numbers are off because one, two.
Okay, we'll fix this.
We do. List the changes to the minutes, hope we can get those possible. You have anything else?
I'm excited.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie's. Shows on his way, let the record show that Michael Evans excused. This is modification of S P I twenty nineteen dash four map one one eight lot forty six, One Love Brewery, outdoor lava seating requested, outdoor lawn seat, excuse me. Request for modification of site plan review approval of July twenty fourth, twenty nineteen, granting request to expand currently offered outdoor space located in a grassy area in front of the village shops to include an additional twelve hundred and fifty square feet of space outdoors. Condition number two said there will be no additional service seating. Applicant is requesting the planning board to modify condition number two of its approval. Applicant wants to put additional tables and chairs and serve food and drink in the additional twelve hundred and fifty square feet of space outdoors instead of guest using that space to games and drink while waiting for table inside or on the deck. Applicant wants to know if the planning board would consider the proposed changes de minimis and therefore not require additional site plan review approval. Applicant Jennifer Snyder, D B A One Love Brewery, twenty five South Mountain Drive, Field Box Zero Four, Lake of New Hampshire, zero three two five one dash zero three zero four. Property Old Village Shops, I C H L C, Marshall John and Bresia, Field Box One Two Seven, Lake of New Hampshire, zero three two five one. Property Village Shop Building, twenty five South Mountain Drive, map one one eight lot forty six. Property is located in the Village Center, B C District. Right here, Jennifer and Michael Snyder, owners and operators of One Love Brewery, rent space in the Village Shops who were granted planning board approval to extend their outdoor seating area with temporary order on the grassy area in the front of the building to expand the currently offered cup or patio of One Love Brewery and Restaurant currently located in the Village Shops to include an additional twenty five by fifty foot, twelve hundred and fifty square feet of space outdoors. The initial purpose of this extension was to help One Love Brewery avoid current legal liability from guests traveling around the property with alcohol. This extension was intended to be a season seasonal solution. This extension allowed guests to have alcohol in the yard while they played games such as cornhole. This grassy area was an awful spot for people to congregate while waiting for a table at One Love Brewery. The fence was made to be a green mess similar to a ski fence attached to PVC piping that went below the ground. Applicants were to remove this fence after tourist season in summer and the fence must. And the fence was most likely to be around three and a half feet tall. Applicants did not intend to turn the grassy space into hot impervious space. Applicants were to take down the fence during the two weekend craft fair events that usually took place on the lawn during one weekend in August and Columbus State weekend in October. The additional square footage proposal was to be located and land currently subject to a ninety year, ninety nine year lease for the town of Lincoln for a compact and town rezivo. The town lease was up on September fourth, twenty seven, twenty seventy four. Applicants request for site plan approval for an expansion of use per article four A of Site Plan Review Regulations to expand the currently offered outdoor space located in the grassy area in front of the village shops to include an additional twelve hundred and fifty square feet of space outdoors was granted by an affirmative majority vote, four zero, the Lincoln Planning Board on July twenty four, twenty nineteen with the following conditions. Review of the original lease by the town attorneys and subsequent approval by the Board of Selectmen and there will be no additional service seating and the fence will be removed during the Castleberry Fair, Craft Fairs, and the area will remain grass and overperpy surfaces. What up?
Um, so it's just basically going to be the same as it has been. They wanted to do a hybrid of games and keep proceeding. And that's it. So I don't know if it's. What's the term?
Okay, if it's de minimis or not. Okay, so, so the other thing that happened was COVID. In between the time that they got their approval and now, um, the governor had an emergency order and he was encouraging towns to municipalities to allow outdoor seating wherever possible and so the Board of Selectmen were the persons who decided, made that decision and said, yes, she could serve in that area that she previously had permission to use for.
Right, now we have them more.
So now the emergency is gone. Well, according to the governor anyway. And so, um, so now she's coming, now the, the same rules are in place that were prior to COVID. And so now this is part, you know, she's asking for modification of approval that we've already given under site plan review. And she's requesting sort of the continuation of what happened under the emergency orders for outdoor seating.
Yeah, we're already approved of the area, it's just games and standing. But we'd like to do, I think you have the map, like beautiful map. So there will be still some games there, but it's just mostly all more tops. So there won't be any additional service really because if outside the weather is poor, there'll be insides. There's no additional parking either, there isn't any other stresses on the community, just they're inside or they're outside. We're not asking for passive expansion of our service, just that they're outside, not inside.
And if you meant, um, let's see. For a select review of the lease.
Our, our land lease?
Lease on the town land, that was one of the conditions, just walk through these four conditions.
Right, there is a disagreement between John and Bresia and the town attorney, but the town attorney, our town attorney felt that we were sort of getting along even though we had a disagreement and basically the advice was that both of the leases which conflicted with each other were in force based, you know, on legal advice. So he said, you're getting along, you know, don't hassle about it. Just continue to sally for it until problems. That was the advice.
Yeah, that's a good summary of it.
We do have a letter of recommendation from the landlord.
Okay. So, condition two, that's why we're here. Even removing the fence during the fair.
The fair hasn't been an issue. I don't think they're coming back, but yes, we would.
Right, there, that's another kind of story because they're too big now to be really be able to successfully have traffic travel from one end of town to another. You know, their, their fair is too big and and they were advised to try to find another venue.
And with the mall being as full in capacity as it is now, it was potential for the other tenants to want to.
The area is still going to remain grass?
Yes.
Okay, so basically the only change is you just want to be able to serve people out there.
Yep, that's it.
Anyone have any questions? Paul?
So it says there's going to be no additional service seating. Does that mean that when you're servicing people outside with tables that you want on your map, that the, that the inside will be reduced? The inside seating will be reduced by that amount?
Yep, that's it, yep.
Well, I think one of the things you mentioned to me is you don't have staff to increase service.
It's always a fun day when, we do have umbrellas out there, but if the weather does be a sudden rain shower, moving everyone inside is, it's just for me that space to move them elsewhere, so we wouldn't overbook that.
I would make that part of the approval on condition if we do that. And, and the other question I would have, or the other thing that I suggested, that we get something from the town attorney stating what Carol said, just put it in the file.
It's in here.
Yeah, I think it's in.
Oh, yes.
So it wants to stick that in with the approval.
Right, this condition, yeah, yeah, so, so we know what was said, just.
Yeah.
Other than that, I think it's.
How many seats are we talking about?
Um, I think that there's eight. Twenty. If I forgot to bring the map with me.
We probably ought to make sure that that's.
It's on, well, it's on the map.
Where's the right? Because the, the fishing table is coming out, right?
The what?
The longer tables come out. So we just want to make sure that that's, whatever that number is, is probably part of the condition.
Ten, ten tables for four people.
Forty seats. Forty seats, so it's the same as our inside. Our upstairs area.
I too am fine with this, it just, it should be wording to go from there will be no additional service seating to there will be additional service seating. Needs to be clarified in my mind.
Right.
That, that should say, um, there will, there will be no net change in the service seating. And, and for every table occupied outside, there will be. And if you want inside, the same size or something like that.
Something like that, sure, yep.
Yeah, and I think when, uh, when Jimmy Gordy, Gordy came in, she said the same thing. They have to set aside the inside seating in their outside for that area.
Right. Right? And if the weather's bad, we don't even see the people outside.
Right.
It's chaotic.
Right.
And do we want to change the, um, number three? And either get rid of it or just cast a prayer or something to be there. So there's no need to have that condition imposed it anymore, I would think.
I, I'm fine with getting rid of it, I, I mean.
If it's not.
You never know what the future is going to bring, but.
If it's not going to be, right, if Casper decides to go back there.
I mean, I guess we couldn't leave it in there and then if the fair happens to come back, then they know they have to take it out.
Well, it would be great to take it out because it does impede on our business plan, you know that. So it would be good, that would be great. I'm pretty confident that they aren't coming back. Just with the parking alone, they take up the whole parking lot.
Yeah.
The mall is almost fully occupied, so that lots.
We're confident they're not coming back.
How about we change the wording again to say, should the Castleberry Fair? Instead of. Should the Castleberry Fair? Does there be any use of the town property that that the fence will happen down? Because if it's not Casper Fair, it could be a, a small concert or a small, something.
That's, and they're doing concerts. Yeah, we're doing.
Yeah, so they're doing the concerts.
Does the town benefit from, like, the Castleberry Fair today?
They do, you do. We get, um, we start getting calls about four months before and people book hotel rooms and everything else if they know Castleberry Fair is going to be.
But there isn't for the town like a monetary.
No.
No.
No, I mean, they pay a, a one.
Application.
I think a hundred bucks for the, for the, for the.
Okay.
Special event permit.
Right, and then they have to pay for the police officers.
Right.
Which again, that's not like a real profitable.
Right.
Thing, I mean, permit fee is a wash, the police detail is a wash, with the town doesn't make a profit.
Sure.
They cover police and some of Carol's time for the permit, but.
Yeah.
We don't make money on it.
Don't take it out?
I wouldn't mind taking it out and leaving it, I mean, the, the, if they ever come back, they're going to have to deal with
the town.
The landlord over there, the tenants over there.
And the town.
And the town. And I just don't see that going through, I mean, you know, back when that was, you know, ninety percent, less busy.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't an issue.
Right, so you could brew fast.
Now, now it's just crazy over there.
It is.
So we just take them.
I, I'm fine with taking it out.
Great.
So anyone have any issue with taking that out?
No problem.
Steve?
Okay.
There you go, one and a half.
It's a good day.
So, okay, so can you also, um, decide that it's de minimis, that this, these changes are de minimis because otherwise we don't have to have another.
We'd have to have a, well. Let's do it in two motions, one motion to decide they're de minimis and then another motion to amend. Okay. Conditions. So is there a motion to find these proposed changes de minimis?
I'll make.
Is there a second, Joe? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, Carrie. All right.
Where are people?
Motion of public, open public comment? Well, actually, Carol, wait a minute, this hasn't been noticed, right? It's public, what has haven't been notified?
No, we, no, we just made the decision about de minimis.
Yeah, so this is really, it's really conceptual, so we really need to have a public.
Right. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, okay. Great, so let's see.
I mean, you can still ask for public comments.
I think we should on the, on the whether it's de minimis or not, it's really a planning.
Right.
Not a public.
I would agree.
All right, so is there a motion, open public comment? Well, let's, one, one motion, seven motion. That's what I said, is there a motion, open public comment? No, this, I'll make a motion. There has to be public comment on a, on a.
Right.
Motion, so.
About the conditions.
I'll make a motion that we change condition number two from the twenty nineteen conditions of approval. Instead of saying there'll be no additional service seating to say there will be no additional net change in service seating. With, for every table used outside, there'll be one equal sized table inside unused. But fine with that?
And then we got to remove, or remove number three.
And we, yeah, so add that, and remove, um, condition number three.
Condition number three and on condition number one, make sure that the attorney's letter gets in as part of.
Attorney's letter to be, opinion letter to be added to the file.
If, yeah, file.
Add it to the notice of decision or you want to add it to the file?
I'll tell you how to do the file.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
Is there any public discussion on this matter? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, did you want the open, after you made the motion? Do you want the public to comment if they wanted to comment?
He, he just asked for that. I asked for, but I didn't ask for motion. But no, no one responded.
He just asked if anybody wanted to say anything.
I was too busy.
Yeah.
That's all right. How long?
All right.
How long does this last, one year, rest of our lives?
Perpurity.
Yeah. It goes with the property.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, hope you have a good season.
Yeah.
Yes.
Enough you don't realize. If you tell the poet they're attacking a lot, it's standing there. They're allowed to put up and sign on it for a special event. But you gave them.
Don't put the floor, the floor, so.
Could you know about.
Okay.
Approved by D B A.
Okay, but I guess they're going to sit big until we get another special event there.
No, it's the same. You don't have to go through a whole, pre-roll.
Yeah.
Research it.
Right.
All right. Encore that, would you have a question for me?
No.
Thank you. Excited with the years, the subdivision issue be twenty twenty two dash one, map one and eight lot two, Presby D B A T and T Mountain Investments LLC subdivision application for minus subdivision. One, relax, applicant property owner. At Presby D B A T and T Mountain Investments LLC, forty four Main Street, Frank O'Leary, New Hampshire, zero three five eight oh. Agent Surveyor Thomas S. Smith, reporting for that Royal alignment. Zero three five eight five, property, Main Street, number B, Land Only, map one and eight lot two, Village Center, B C District. Proposal, application for subdivision, proposes to ride one line into three lots on Main Street, Route one one two, just northeast of Town Hall. Lot is currently five point four three acres. Applicant proposes to subdivide it into three parcels. Lot two point one, one hundred and thirty three thousand five hundred and fifty or three point zero six acres has a large easement area for the benefit of Southern Peace Development LLC. Parking for new seasons at South Mountain, located at twenty three Inseason's Drive, map one oh eight, lot forty seven. In is the location of a portion of Cooper Memorial Drive right away, sixty six feet wide. Lot two point two, sixty one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, or one point four two acres, and is located off of Cooper. Portion of Cooper Memorial Drive right away, sixty six feet wide, shared access Cooper Memorial Drive and lot two point three, forty one thousand three hundred and eighty four square feet, or zero point nine five acres. Shared access off from Cooper Memorial Drive. Two new lots will be created, improvements to these lots, extension of municipal water and sewer lines and extensions. Utilities will be required. The plan includes shared access easements to lot two point two and lot two point three. What up?
A lot of words.
Yeah.
I know I made copies, right, so everybody has the plan. Yeah, pretty much spelled it out, like to take, take the lot and split it in three. One lot being everything on this side of the road. And then one, the other side of the road having two lots. And we access that with a, with a right of way to the, to the back lot on the corners too. Because we're not counting on any access off the main road from D O T, I'm guessing that's probably going to be a negative. But we did leave a right of way in there anyway. So when I was talking to D O T, they said there might be a chance for some one way traffic off Main Street. So we decided we just leave that in those two lots and then it's available if someone wants to use it if we get that permit. Hey, of course, because if you don't know the use, they won't give you, you know, a permit, so.
Right.
We're, you know, can't really go any further with that, so. I think my, my surveyors are the ones that really filled out the app, and I think we made all the subdues. Whether they think, or shattering, that I can see. I know, I think my, my conceptual, there was a question about whether we had legal rights to use Cooper Memorial. My surveyor said absolutely, since it's on your land, it's, you know, you own it, it's, you know, so there's no question about that as far as we have access off that, so.
She simply can't obstruct it, basically.
Yeah, yeah, everybody else gets to use it too, right, but we certainly, yeah. There's no question there. Um, I think all the buildable areas, you know, minus the setbacks, I mean, I mean, there's plenty of room on the lots, I think it's fifteen thousand square feet in this district, right, so they're plenty big enough. They all have road frontage. Um, I don't know, I don't know exactly what else there is to.
Okay, um.
What I missed, something.
Well, did you know that this is in the Village Center, it's not in general use, I think you have the setbacks for the general, general use zone.
Did you have the Ron setbacks shown on there?
Uh, yeah. It's on, we have.
Do we need it because there's no really on it?
Yes.
Does it?
I want to, when I'm serving that, like, I need to see the setbacks on here and.
You said Village Center?
Yeah, this is a Village Center lot.
On this one that shows.
Okay, it has G U, but there's a line, the line goes across the street to the yellow. It is a pink, it is a pink, B C, Village Center.
I'll trust you.
Okay, I see the line is pointing.
Yeah, I don't see it, it's.
I see it now that you pointed about it.
You're pointing across the street. Well, I see Village Center across the street.
Yeah, but look at that, that line is pointing to.
This is, this is supposed to be pink, but highlighted, that's why it's not.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, this is kind of, anyway, G color, this is, yeah, so we're all there, so this is all Village Center. I don't know all the setbacks, so they are less than Village Center.
For this, so this color rate, okay.
I think it's less.
Less, yeah. Five feet from the street.
But this is general use, but then it's showing Village Center.
I think it's five.
It's pointing to the pink.
Is it at five everywhere?
It's because there's.
Yeah, build up pretty good, I just checked that. Actually, yeah.
Must be too many pages. Yeah, so, so this is Village Center. So it's supposed to have. The setback is supposed to be what?
Five in the front, ten on the side, fifteen in the back.
We have one on that.
Fifteen.
We have fifteen?
Fifteen on the back.
Yeah, fifteen on the back.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's, I guess it's an error in our favor, potentially, but for that matter, but we could certainly, I think this is going to be a two meeting process, no matter what, right?
Few other things I need on your survey. I need your address, you're supposed to have the owner's address on here. And you have everybody else's address, which is good, but I need yours too. And then, um, there's a little bit of flood plain in this lot.
I see it's there, so it says up, says owner, it's up under where this, where the secretary and chairman are signed, just in a funny spot. So it's underneath the signature block for the.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
I didn't see it. Close.
Okay, so then, um, Ron is, if he cuts, if he cuts off that right of way, that fifty foot right of way that goes into the, that he doesn't have a curb cut for, you know what I mean? Between lots number two and three, can you turn a truck around in there and all that?
Wouldn't know without the dimensions. That would probably end up being discussed or a site plan approval anyway.
I just want to make sure.
You talking about making the turn, making the nine year return to go out to Main Street or, or over to Cooper, for the right way?
Well, if he got a truck in there.
Yeah.
Come back out.
Oh, I see.
If he can't, if he can't access off Main Street there. It sounded to me like, when I saw the email from D O T, it sounded to me like he was not going to give you one.
Yeah, no, it's, it's questionable for sure, they're always, they always start out that way though. They always start out, no.
I, I've never heard of that.
No, I didn't, yeah.
I've been here for nine years.
Off Main Street, no.
So, no.
Yeah, I'm not expecting to get one, so.
Anyway.
Your D O T order made only fifteen years ago. You know, with interest towards it now, there's an office space that left it on the most easily lot. The D O T said there'd be somebody back out, so, to remember Cooper Memorial, to come back and go around, which was a ninety three, but Cooper Memorial. D O T looked at it and proved it at that time. You weren't here, so you don't know what's going on.
Yeah, this is, um, notice is a minus subdivision, they, they're calling it a major.
Yes, it's a minor.
Minor.
It is a minor?
Yeah.
I was thinking because it's more, it's three lots or more, the way we read the rules.
Three lots is cut off, so.
Okay, so, okay.
I mean, it's tech, housekeeping really, doesn't change the regulations.
If you have to change this, you might as well get that right.
If we're changing, what am I doing?
Putting, setting major subdivision in.
Problem, I think if Frank Conia, if there's potential to resub, to subdivide any of it again, then we call major, so.
We, we have provisions of.
Whatever works, you're the bosses, either way.
Okay, so then, um.
You, why don't we go through this checklist?
Okay.
All right, so. Indicate type of application, we've already done that. Eight, names and addresses of where bought is.
Yeah, we start with.
Yeah. Application and notice fees and a check payable to the town of Lincoln.
We actually, because of COVID, we have twelve copies instead of.
Okay, so right of the copies, all right, skip down. Write it for copies, name of subdivision.
Well, I'm assuming it just says.
T and T Mountain Investments LLC.
It's not really a.
It's not really.
Housing development or something, I don't know, I could make up a name if I need to.
Yeah. If anyone is, I think putting his name on it's fine.
Yeah.
Name and address, bonus sub provider. On the, but. Yes, it is, right, yeah.
It's in a funny spot, would you like me to move it down below, T and T Mountain Investments? So it's more visible.
First, they don't have an issue, does anyone else have an issue?
Chris, they don't have an issue. Does anyone else have an issue? No, now that we know where it is.
Okay.
Submarine engineer that's provided. Eight more arrow and scale. I wasn't already talked about. See. What land has defined by. Okay, now, yeah, it says wetlands is defined by, and then in parentheses, H I S map, Hydrax soils, wetlands overlay zone, et cetera. I don't see. Or you just say none shown on overlay. What does that mean? Does that mean you just looked at the town tax maps and you decided there was no wetlands?
No, we, I mean, we surveyed it. My surveyor surveyed it. I walked it. I didn't fill the application, I'll be quite honest with you, so I didn't really check that.
The reason I'm asking is.
There's nothing we're gonna disturb. If there's anything, it's at the very toe of the slope, you know, in the unbuildable steep zone down there.
Okay, so we got the hundred-year floodplain that just eeks up.
Yeah, just flips it, sure.
And then this is the five hundred year flood zone.
Which is the road, pretty much.
Yeah.
For the most part.
So anyway, I don't. Don't have necessarily the the wetlands on, so that's why I'm asking.
Yep, no, I'm.
There were no wetlands at all.
I guess I couldn't say that with absolute certainty, but if there's any wetlands, they're at the very, their very toe of the slope down by where that big culvert and stream is shown. Where you couldn't couldn't build anywhere. I mean, it's not anywhere. Nothing is gonna affect the building areas. If you need us to delineate all the wetlands to put them on the subdivision plan, I guess we could do that, certainly.
This is up to.
Get a question. I mean, it's all pretty high dry ground out there.
You're dividing land.
Yeah.
You have to determine what's gonna be on the land. So wouldn't ask, can you still find another piece of property? I don't have to delineate it specifically, subdivision.
Paint it all.
Listen here, just out of curiosity. Is it required?
To delineate the wetlands?
On the subdivision.
What her ordinance is. You're looking, I mean, you know, you don't wanna have, you know, what you're trying to do is avoid someone from creating a non-buildable lot. That's the purpose of having that, having that on there.
That should be on it.
This one's actually intermittent.
I'm not saying they shouldn't. I'm asking you, answering this question.
It's intermittent with me, not a full time, I'm wondering.
Well, we have to the surveyor to decide that. Right.
I can flag him.
So can you, can you check and see if there are any wetlands?
Absolutely, yeah. We're not in the panic to get this done.
This shows, this shows wooded area and non-wooded.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we didn't show any wetland on the plan. I mean, if I was, you know, if we were gonna build roads or do something like that, it's part of a, like a, like a development or something, we obviously would, you know. We can, um, we can delineate the wetland boundary and put that on a plan, no problem.
Percentage of site and fields and woods. I think he's got that. Yeah. He has wooded areas to delineate.
The reason I have to question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has it under notes, number two, wooded and open. Look at you. Guess why it make a difference?
Cause wetland, if you can't touch it, it's big events.
Oh, no, yeah.
Other than you can.
You can actually cut every single tree off a wetland if you want, as long as you don't disturb the soil. But.
Most of the trees in what's saving.
Yeah, there's, there's. There's nothing good down there.
Yeah. Uh, property lines of just in buildings, historic sites and structures. Then all on there. Existing streets with names or root designations. He has that on there. Size of site in acres with number of acres in village residential district and in general use district. Okay, it, it shouldn't have all the zones. I don't know why this is just. Just says. Yeah, it should say number of acres in each zoning district.
This, this whole thing's in the, in the village sensor district, right?
Yeah, it is.
Got the acres on there.
Pop-up graphic contours and water courses both seasonally near round. Pretty much already covered that. Wells municipal water sources within one hundred and fifty yards of site. Soils, he has that, level three. Town consulting engineering reimbursement fee. So at this time, he hasn't paid any retained or recall, but we review this. No. No, that would be up to you to decide what that's. Right, so it's something we can revisit when we get back into it if we want to. Tax map changes fee. No, it takes me a lot of time, but no, we don't charge anything for it. Okay. Site location map drawn at a larger scale and shown on the site survey or proposed subdivision map with tax map page and parcel numbers. Here. Yeah, and you'll need to put the minimum lot size somewhere on here, just another note.
In the district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you put the. District is the village center and then, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, I don't know what size.
Got it.
Zoning classification, we've already talked about that. Size of site in acres. Individual lots around there.
Do you wanna know the, do you wanna know the total acreage? Or is that what?
Yeah, well, I think you have it. No, number one.
Yeah, no one has a.
Yeah, okay, we have that. Existing streets with names and designation, we've already done that. Three buildings remain no buildings. Do there any deed restrictions on the land?
We showed it on the map.
Yeah.
Well, it says none, so. You're not putting any deed restrictions, no mobile home or anything like that.
No.
Okay.
No, we didn't think of that. Kind of overdoing it.
Okay, that's right. Limited drainage plan. Provided, not heated easements, they're shown. Parking easement. Okay, but. The easement, is that? Who's responsible for the Cooper Memorial Drive? Do you, did you find that out when you did your title work? Like who maintains this and who's?
I don't know. I can't say that I know who maintains it.
Biggest. Biggest person, the, the biggest, needs to the most, who now? I'm sure they're only five different parts.
Well, I think Lil's representatives are on.
Keep going through the application first.
Yeah.
I mean, he's designated, what, what's the easement?
Yeah.
Or easements, there's two, two easements.
Future subdivision proposals on same site, you said you don't have any plans to further subdivide. Lot lines are shown. Soils and groundwater test pits. Did you have any groundwater test pits at all?
I had, um, I had a level two, I guess it was, environmental done. Just, just to kind of protect me because, you know, there's been a lot of strange uses down here in the valley over the years, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but we didn't, uh. We didn't use them to like determine soil conditions or anything like that. We're just looking for contamination of any sort. And we don't have any on-site septic, right? So we, I mean, so we wouldn't really need a soil test bit for septic purpose, so. I don't know what, what would we need the soil test bits for, really?
Did you do something, you said?
We did. We did some environmental stuff. We didn't, you didn't log it for like septic.
I would think that would probably should be on the, the plan, where you did your.
Right.
Where you did your test pits at should be probably shown on this plan.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about why later.
Okay, I don't know. Yeah, we can, I'm sure we can pick them up with the GPS and it's fine.
Proposed open space.
Sorry.
What's that?
What'd you say?
Proposed, I'm just going through this checklist. Yeah, proposed open space. So we can show it wooded and open. He hasn't listed, so I'd say he's met that.
The open space, when that commander, when he puts the buildings up.
Oh, number two.
What's that again?
When the open space would be required, you put the buildings up, you build up.
Well, we do that lot coverage when he, if and when his proposal cycle. Correct test. You know about the stormwater management ordinance, right?
I'll learn, I'm sure.
Okay.
Make a note.
You really wanna look at that.
I know we did our test bits. We've been down over twelve feet. We never found any water in any of them, so. It's pretty dry.
The stormwater management's all more inclusive.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
You have to keep all the water on the lot. Whoever waters on the lot stays on the lot.
Understood. We do a alteration in train permits and stuff like that.
The alteration of training is totally different than stormwater.
Right, I know that down, right.
Preliminary road cross-sections and preliminary road profiles not applicable. Setback line, we already talked about that in our list.
While you're on that, but.
Come on, three L. On page four.
While you're there, but you need to change that. It says fifteen inches on your plan, on fifteen feet.
Well, it's on fifteen feet anyway, right?
Right.
We're not, absolutely, yeah, we're good.
Post-streets, roads with locations, names and right of way widths not applicable. Well, he's got them on here. He's got the right of way width here that he's proposing is fifty-foot right of way. Access the lot. Well, at least this a few features building roads, I believe, where it says. Oh, I see, okay. Water means and other utilities preliminary. Soil.
Didn't realize the soil went down. I thought it was in the road. Is, is that where Patel has to take? Yeah, or is it, it's right more.
Sure goes where?
I think it's further down. I'm not sure.
There's two.
Sure, let's try it right down from north again, all the way down.
No, it's showing one sewer line.
Yeah, sure.
Sewer line on Main Street, right? There's one that goes behind town hall walls.
Okay. And it goes through this lot. Well, check with the.
Who's name?
The public works director.
Was along this, where this old road was. The same, this is the same thing.
Be sure, buddy.
Hold it deep. That's the sewer line.
I think so. That's what I said, check. This is a layer that the public works has, and I just barely ended up being able to see it, so.
Except for force man. Cause force man comes across a bridge and goes down the back of.
That's on the backside, isn't it?
Right. So I don't know. I don't think there's anything that's up that road. I'm a little confused about that.
So I think there's a sewer line there.
Because of the, too many. Yes, that's the sewer easement.
Yeah, cause we're in the, we're the next one down right now. He said, that's what it's sewer now. I don't think that's sure there. Comes down, comes right through where the cruisers park. Versus to the Hampton Inn lot and it goes to the.
I don't know where that is.
So you've got the other one that services the outside of Main Street. And then this one serves that. It's outside of Main Street. Going to that.
South, the south peak comes up and it goes. Sewer line across the river. Hard glass.
Yeah, it goes back up. It all kind of intersects right there.
Doesn't come along the road.
I guess more of the sewer line goes right behind town hall here.
It comes down, it's all telling.
Yeah.
I checked with these overlays may not be accurate. I think that's.
Worked on. One O E I S and or environmental assessment to be required. Oh. Overlays, a special investigative studies to be required. No, anywhere.
So this overlays and special investigative stuff, is that, with that taken consideration? And I know we just got something from you today about the. Asbestos that was found. That was found with Dennis, but I mean, that, that, that to me should be up to the, I would think the applicant would have to. Take care of that during the, whatever they decide they're gonna do, they would have to, there's, do test pits and stuff like that at that time.
Right, well, Dennis, Dennis did have a test pit. The one on the subject property and there was asbestos in some test pit. So. We talked to the D E S today and they confirmed it and they sent me the report. And so I have a report for the rapids and for in-seasons and it was a, an asbestos disposal site. So the.
Where was that? Don't mind me asking. I guess I can ask. Where was that? Where was the asbestos?
Um, it's, uh.
Don't pay this theater.
Yeah, for her. I, the environmental person that did my, my testing had done some down here and they were a little concerned there might be something, but then when they got there, they realized that there was an old pond or something. It was a little farther away. They pretty.
They'll walk on it.
Yeah.
It was everywhere.
Scale. Yeah, they were happy with what they found. We didn't find anything.
So this is, uh. Dennis had only one test pit done. It's right here. And it did have asbestos in it, and that's why he only disturbed, he only. He paid that area, cause he didn't.
Where is your, where is it that has the issues?
These are, it's all through here.
Yeah.
And it's this whole property down here.
Right, I knew that. I knew this.
And this is his property here.
Right, so his test pits were more on this side or more on my side?
Well, this is all, this is on your.
Yeah, that one's on that side.
So B nine.
Is I can take a picture of that?
Yeah, I'll give you this after.
Oh, perfect. Where's that? It's over right there.
It's hard to tell exactly where it is. It's right here, B nine.
This is town. Yeah, it's town hall. What is this?
Past, we write it.
This is, that's in season. So the old road used to go across here. The old road used to be right where that easement limit area line is. Okay, usually make that curve when I know.
It's hard to tell.
Well.
She thought this was the parking down right line, but. Anyway, this is B nine right here.
But parking, you see the parking there, it's right there.
And he only had one test. On that lot, and he had spent so much money on fixing the rest of it, but. I don't think.
I mean, asbestos, but I can tell about it. That was pretty to it. But it has nothing to do with it. Subdividing the law, whoever builds on.
I mean, you just run lines on paper, yeah.
Right, right. Whoever finally decides to build on it.
If they find this thing.
Everybody, she, he, his statement going all day, came before us.
Doesn't have to be a note on the plan indicates that, that there was.
Oh, thanks.
Contamination found if it was on this lot. Oops, I hope that's off.
You'll come, you'll come, you know, containment department, down ball here with the. At the end of shopping center, that area. That's where it was. That can talk to them. It found, it really had a dump. Bring up the end of old pipes and stuff like this here.
Yeah.
That's where they contain, they say found it, they, when C and B dug it up. C and B dug it up, they want to test. They said it was, that's really, really significant, but long as it's covered, it creates no problem.
Yeah, they closed it.
Pack a lot of it.
Right. I'm looking at aerial photos, just, I just pulled up Lincoln and it looks. I'm looking at aerial photos, just, I just pulled up Lincoln, and it looks like these test pits are on. On the, the hotel side of the line, it's just really like. There's only part of that, part of that world, that's their world that's over on our side, we have a little piece of a parking area, which, or this map sticks over there pretty far. Like, I think these are, I mean, there could be stuff on ours too, but it's good to know, so.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we should take a couple of test pits down there, so.
Well, I mean, if, if, the test pit, I would think should be identified on this plant, if it's on, if it's on this plant, then the test pit that was done should probably be shown. If not, then it doesn't need to be shown.
All you, they worked.
This being a test pit that someone else did, should be shown on.
I- i- if it's on this, if it's part of, one of these lots, then I think it should be shown. If there was a test pit, though.
I guess, all right, we didn't do it, so I know if it's exact spot, but whatever, I mean, I don't, I don't think it is anyway. Okay, we certainly show anything that we do, certainly log those test pits.
I worked with a bill. We have a dump, that's a real lot, so, always dumped in the pond area, which is basically paper scraps and bio micro.
Yeah, so my, that's what my environmental person said.
And.
They would think I hear that.
And coal ash.
Yeah, she was like, yeah, that's the pond was, they wanted, they first carried, they wanted to dig on the other side of the road, I'm like, well, that's not property I'm buying, so we can't really dig one there. It's down further, I think, was the pond, it's like, that's what.
Pond is right there.
Kind of park.
Right there. Let's, let's, let's fast forward to twenty twenty-two.
There you go.
Page five, so. Page G, they're actually all redundant, yes. H, bearings and distances of entire property and lot lines based on the, on the, on the ground survey plus topography and five quadruples. Provided. Lot areas and dimensions and square feet are acres provided. Lots numbered in accordance with town tax map policy. Yes. Statement of responsibility and liability for streets, roads and their maintenance not applicable.
Uh.
Well, actually.
That is a.
Memorial Drive.
You have Cooper Memorial Drive, so you need to get something on this plan that says who's responsible for the maintenance of that.
Yeah.
If that's, cause that's part of the checklist.
We saw.
And, as well, I would think that, our question, if, if, you also need, after the one that you're proposing to do, to watch the access between two point two and two point three. Who's gonna, who's gonna be responsible for maintaining that, that one, plus.
He's gonna get that curb cut.
Well, no, but there's still, there's still a fifty-foot right-of-way, that someone's gonna have to maintain.
You might want to put on a date on, on the flat. Town itself, homeless, for maintaining, for maintaining that road at this time.
It's not town road.
No, I'm saying, so the only thing to come back, kind of fight, and say, we have to maintain it.
So that's, that's why, it's a note, it's a note on the plans, just, it's a. If the applicant here has to say, who's, who's gonna maintain it, so it's a note on the plan, it gets registered.
You just, you just wanna, like, just like a note, you don't wanna like a whole blur, a whole like description of all the players in the road and Cooper, and, cause that could be, I mean, I'm guessing that could be a little sticky, cause there's lots of people.
I would think you just have to say, who's responsible to do the maintenance of the road? I mean, and to make, the word maintenance. If there's water and sewer and power underneath there, if there's utilities, it's who's, I would think who's gonna be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that, that road. And the same with your right-of-way, so there's no, there's no question later on, fifty years from now.
Sure.
Who's, who's, you know, if there's a water main break, who has to fix her, if there's sewer on there.
I mean, I could obviously speak, I could obviously speak for the right-of-way that I'm creating on land that I, that I own, right, but I mean, for me to. To come up with anything concrete on Cooper Memorial might, might be a little complicated, cause I don't, I don't know any of those players, right, I mean, I don't know, you know, there's a lot of people down the road that are using it, so.
It should be on your, uh, the recorded D, who's responsible for.
It's pretty loose, there's not a lot of stuff, but I'll, I'll do something.
Is any road maintenance agreement, if you're there?
Never.
Yeah.
Never.
What's that?
I'll, I'll just dig in and see what I can find, yeah, we'll just on the, the original one.
I know.
There was. When it got moved. When, when the road got over, I'm sure there must have been something, because the state was involved in all that too, so.
I'll look, see what we can find.
All right. W S P C subdivision approval.
Well, that's. Individuals.
Okay.
That's it for septic issues, we don't.
Yeah, okay. Just give you one estimate, of course, of required improvement and statement concerning bond or other security, not applicable, not building any roads. State driveway permit, if any, so you have that curb cut, maybe. Legal documents for homeowners association or other arrangements for property and utility management. Subdivision regulation compliance statement. Have that.
What?
Yeah, what is that?
What is that?
Page six.
By the bow, it's his final plan, subdivision regulations, town, blah, 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 it's on there.
Okay. Sweet space for water, doors with that's there. Other information required by the board, including E I S overlays, etc., we're gonna get to that. Right. All that, does anyone have any questions at the moment?
I have one. The, so when you look at the buildable square feet. On these, does that take out, is that taking, taking out the right-of-ways?
Yes, and it takes out the setbacks too.
And it take, so it takes out the right-of-ways and the setbacks.
Correct.
It'll be adjusted slightly.
Yeah, they're gonna get bigger, cause the right of, the setbacks are gonna get smaller.
Does it take out the easement area and on lots, two point one?
Um, I don't know that, and he didn't put a buildable area on that one.
Yeah, that's what I saw, I didn't see that there was any buildable area on that one.
Um, I.
It's probably big enough, but I, I don't know, cause it didn't say it.
Well, the easement area is, that easement area, it's, it's wordy, my attorneys took a while to go through it, that easement area, we can, we can actually use too. Like, I, like, that part, it's a, it's a really odd situation, but we can go back and forth on that, we can even build on that. But that's an area that either of us can use, it's very strange.
What happened was, when he booked the hotel back here, same people on part of that land. They did an easement, showed their own benefit, when they sold it.
And they needed the.
Still there.
Yeah.
Right, and either way, I know there's, there's way more than fifteen thousand square feet in this chunk, you know, it's way bigger than the other ones, so.
I just wanna make sure that, you know.
Would you like to show?
That the plan was accurate, that it should say whatever the buildable area is on, lot two point one as well.
Right, and does it include the easement or not?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. I think we probably focus on these, cause they were small, you know, and then.
Right.
And, and the only other question I had was, on your two point two and two point three lots, it shows the fifty-foot right-of-way, and it shows it stopping. Is that what, is wrong to look at as far as, whether you need a hammerhead, or you'll be able to turn around in it, is that what you're gonna look at? So, if, if you need a hammerhead at the end of it, or do you want a hammerhead? Cause that's gonna, that's gonna change the buildable square footage on one or the other lots.
Right. Probably wouldn't do a hammerhead down the right-of-way, right, you try to incorporate whatever you're gonna do with whatever is gonna go out there, right, in the park.
Yeah, I don't know, you and.
Yeah.
Wanna, wanna figure that out, but that, that may affect some of the square footage, buildable square footage, if, if it has to have a hammerhead on there. That's all I have.
Anyone else have any other questions?
No.
The property, well, if all three go around, it's gonna look back out.
Right.
You wouldn't need any of it.
I think that's. That will.
That's gonna need a lot of real estate doing those, corners, still on that last plot.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there may, I mean, we may, depending on the use and whatever happens, we may, we may put those back together, I don't know, I, like, I just don't know what's.
Lots two point two, two point three?
Yeah, they could get merged back together too, if something comes along, it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, no.
Okay, um, on the, on two point one. Is the act, is your access is gonna be Cooper Memorial Drive, so is that gonna be?
Well, potentially, D O T, another little thing that Jim McMahon said, I mean. They weren't, they, they had a, when he gave me the color coding green, it was happy, orange was maybe, red was no, there was an orange one here, so. Potentially, someone could petition to, you know, to try to permit to come off Main Street to this one, certainly dump, you know, it isn't like this one, but it's closer to the road to Cooper Memorial, but. So I would assume that we would, that someone probably come off Cooper to go to all the lots, but that's an assumption at this point, until someone pushes that button.
So they know what you're gonna do with it.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you can't even ask them anything, so you know your exact use, right, it's just, you can't go anywhere, cause you know nothing, so.
We just like to appreciate the hotel, a pay by, a man, he tried to come up one twelve, and they refused. And he went off of Ford's Road Drive.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so then, I guess my other question is. So you said you had already, had, have you already sold lot number one, two point one?
I have someone who, it's under contract, but they haven't committed yet, it's just they're in their little investigative stage of whatever they wanna do, which. I have a non-disclosure agreement, and I don't exactly know anyway, but I think I know, but I can't say. So I'm not, I'm not really even focused on that, I guess.
You're really committed tonight, I could.
Yeah, well, I just figured, I, I just figured, I mean, I don't, you know, like I said, you can't really ask for D O T for anything, until you know what you're doing, if you don't know what you're doing, you can't make any progress. I figured for conversation purposes, we have ample road footage, you know, I don't know more than I know, and that's just, I can't, I can't, I don't know.
Okay, so, um, so I have, we have had communication here from. People who do know, uh, what they're planning to do there. And, you know, they were talking about.
I know nothing.
Hundred unit hotel, so.
Do we have any communication to that, I didn't see anything about that.
No, I, I mean, just today, as in, just today.
I told you two weeks ago. I told you that two weeks ago.
Well, I know you did, but. So I didn't, I didn't hear it from.
Two point one.
Had direct information, okay?
Yeah, that'll be on the bigger one.
So, um. And that'll, that'll have to come for a site plan review, obviously, but it also might change how you look at access.
I don't want that. You're gonna use Cooper Memorial, which she, it's on his property.
So we have any thoughts about that?
The only thing he would have to do would be, I mean, it's all hypothetical, cause it's.
Right, exactly, right, we're right now, we're just putting lines on paper.
Yeah, I don't think we even need to discuss it, because it's all.
We know what they're gonna do, right?
Yeah.
Dictate what's gonna.
It's all hypothetical.
I wouldn't tell you if I knew, I just like said, I know, I don't know how big, I don't know what shape, I don't know where.
That's why this is.
Right.
Right.
I think we just deal with the.
Okay.
The fact that he's. Making three lots there, and not worry about what he's using them for.
Okay, so just one other thing I wanna bring up, is, they had a similar proposal back in. Nineteen ninety-six, slope side realty trust. And. Pardon? Anyway, so, so this box.
Maybe I stole.
I haven't had a chance to look through this whole box, I did look through. The notice of decision, and the legal opinion. I know you guys don't wanna look all through that, all that stuff, but, um, you know, there were, there were issues. The plane board had back then. About doing this kind of arrangement, so, I don't know if you're interested in knowing about it.
Yeah, I am.
Were you on the board then, Joe?
Yeah.
Were you on the board then?
Yep.
Okay. You remember anything?
What's the question, though, Carol?
Do you wanna know anything about it, do you wanna know what the legal opinion was, do you wanna know what the. I mean, the notice of decision was, and the legal opinion after.
Did it deal, did it deal with this, these three laws?
It's pretty close.
Huh?
Yeah.
Look at that, it looks very similar to what it is before you know.
Well, I know, we gotta know, we can't just think, I mean, if it's, it's.
I'm just asking, do you want that information or not, because I can, you know, I can.
In one way, in one point, we know it's going in.
Yeah.
Definitely, it's not there now, so that tells me something.
I don't know what it is.
I mean, was there a subdivision, they obviously didn't go forward with the subdivision.
Correct, there were, there were a lot of conditions preceding. That were in the notice of decision.
I would think that if there's some documentation that shows a reason why this could not be subdivided, or. Or if there's, were decisions that were made about the uses of this property, that are still in effect, that the board would need to know about that, prior, prior to approving any type of.
Right, and it could be that whatever they said back then, you could care less about, I mean, it could be.
Right, they may have said that, you know, that this property could never be subdivided, or it could be.
I can grab, I can grab, but it wasn't aboard at the time.
A, a legal opinion of some sort, that says it could only be used for this, this, or this, I mean, and, and to me. A purview of what would probably, wouldn't hurt. Because if, if, if we give, if we give contrary opinion, then I would think that would, I'd be good.
David Blake and C and B came in, they were, they were perpetrating in the background for this whole property, and there was no restrictions put on the deed, that's a subdivision, everything's subdivision. What should be put in, what could be put in, except for the parking restriction, they used to do with this hotel backwards.
Well, except, that, that, that's your opinion, and I think that's.
It's my opinion.
But if there's, if there's, if the town has documentation that shows something, I think we have a responsibility to, to decide whether it affects this property or not. Before we allow a subdivision, cause it may be something that we should have known.
Yeah.
And behind the scenes, for your information, David Blake is one of the owners at the time. Out of Camden, used to part of C and B's retired now.
All these initials, I don't know anybody.
Cargill, it was Cargill, something.
Oh.
C and B, all cargo model, Tom Holland, Blake, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, if we're gonna, what do we open up as public comment, or motion to that?
Do we wanna, uh.
Wait a minute.
We're gonna make an emotion to accept this as complete, or, or point out.
Well, I think we should just point out what, what is.
Needing complete.
Well, I was gonna take some public comment.
Oh, just on the application, okay.
Just, yeah. Or do you wanna just move forward, something you guys?
We can, we can't bring it up, you.
All right, all right, motion, open up public comment. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You want to close? Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this application?
Dennis.
All right, good evening, everybody, I don't, yeah, I have some public comments on this property. As to the environmental assessment, I think further discovery needs to be said, uh, for the lot that's in question with this applicant, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
When we developed the, the two wings at South Mountain Resort, we had an environmental assessment, as you, as you said earlier, in the comment. And we dug some test pits, and we found that the soil is contaminated with asbestos. It cost us close to a million dollars to, to, uh, remove all the contaminants from that site. So the fact that, we did go over the, we did do a, a test pit over the property line, but the soil that we removed was about fifty feet from the property line to this particular lot, so. I think that further exploration needs to be, further exploration needs to be done, um, on this particular lot. And if we, without further investigation.
Uh, Dennis, Dennis, you're, you're going in and out, and I don't know if you're turning your head away from your microphone, or what?
Probably my internet here, not working too well, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
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 Dennis, are you referring to lot two dash one? The lot. Boarding your property.
Yeah, two that, two that, that's one, what is my property?
Just for the record.
So, I, I'd be very wary that there's no contaminants on this particular site, number one. A few days ago, as, as you all know, there's an easement on this property, and I have this easement on. A few days ago, as, as you all know, there's an easement on this property, and I have this easement on this property. And as part of my site plan approval way back when, two thousand fourteen or fifteen. I improved that parking lot and I have thirty parking spaces on that parking lot. And it was part of my need to develop South Mountain Resort, and it was approved at that time. I received a phone call this past week from, I'm assuming, a prospective buyer of that site. That said they wanted to put up a hundred unit hotel and could we share the parking? And my answer to that was, no, we can't do that. I have that easement and perpetuity and it has to keep going forward, so. I don't know what the further plans, I understand that's not on the table this evening, but there's going to be something coming down the road.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Would anyone else like to speak at this time?
I just want to know, I see there's a few lone people on there, do you guys know anything about the Cooper Memorial? Drive, is that? Is that, are loans responsibility or anything? Maintaining that road? Or do you know, who would know?
Carol, I can comment on that if you, if you'd like. And, and we are doing a little bit of additional work on the lower portion of the road with, with some research at the Y and south of there. Yeah, the loon obviously has an easement through what would on this map be two, two, I think it is? Hold on, I just lost the map for a second. Uh, yep.
It would be both.
Yeah.
Two and two one.
Bordering, correct, that's correct. You know, our obligations are to repair and maintenance of the road surface under normal wear. And that is also assigned to our successors and, and any assignees that we delegate.
Do you share that responsibility with any other group or?
Yep, yeah, at this time, it would be now South Peak LLC, that section of road in question.
Gee, is there any road maintenance agreement, formal road maintenance agreement?
What do you mean by that, Jim?
For our Cooper Memorial Drive, is there a formal agreement, who does what, who pays what?
Uh, so, yeah, between us and, and Centex, now South Peak, there's a, a equal share on that maintenance.
So it's not Southern Peaks Development, it's not Dennis, it's South Peak Resort, right?
Yep, correct.
So the right of way, the right of way is owned by you, because it's on your property. And there is a legal, do I understand this? Is there, is there a legal agreement, is what you're saying, in writing as the? Who maintains what and what, find, what percentage is paid financially between the parties?
There, there is, well, there's a few things, a, as I've learned over the years, there's quite, quite a bit of. History to this parcel and, and with the deed, the easement deed, there is an operating covenants that existed with that. Our, 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 our agreement, I guess you could call it, or, or arrangement with South Peak LLC at this point in time. Is within the operating agreement that South Peak holds. And you guys are pretty privy with that, with all the things that have gone on with Centex, Cypress, and now South Peak LLC.
So does, does that mean that you would know, OJ? I've been, yeah, I've had access to that, to that, and Jay, I believe that's, that's a public document, right? Isn't that, that operating filed with Grafton County?
Yep, correct.
Okay, so, so I'm not speaking out of turn here, I mean, it's, it's a public document, but, but, and I believe it's. This plan number twelve five seven eight that's, that's listed on here. Is the plan, but there's, there's a document that goes with that, that explains. And from what I understand, it's just what Jay said, that Loon is responsible for, for maintaining this road. And South Peak LLC pays fifty percent.
Yes, and, and that's not, I mean, that can be changed in the future as to the, the arrangement there, you know, but that is correct. And the downtown has that document on file somewhere, too.
And I, I would suggest. That on the, on the map here. That that just be documented, the, the, the plan number is listed. But if that operating agreement.
Well, it could be, it said that volume three, three, five, two, page one eighty-six.
Yeah, it says that, and the plan number, so probably especially that volume is, is probably the legal.
Description who does what.
Operating agreement, who does what. So.
Do you need that more specifically spelled out in notice then, or is that sufficient, or, you know, how much detail when we get into one of plan?
I would think, I would think that you should probably research that and make sure that what it does say. And if it does, if it does indicate who's responsible for maintenance and upkeep. I would think that somewhere there should be a note to say reference plan, whatever, volume, whatever, for. And for maintenance and upkeep of Cooper Memorial Drive. Be great.
Carol, you can, you can put it right in the office here.
Uh, no, I can't, only John can.
You can look, you can look at the documents, you can't pay for them, you can't print them without.
Anyone could, anyone could.
We can get into Grafton and do that.
Yeah.
I haven't been able to access them for probably two years.
That's far.
I don't know if it's a, John is able to do it.
Okay. He can do it, I mean, it's listed right there, it's easy enough to look up.
Yeah, for P, you can be put on that. The view and as public document, you own anybody. For lot.
Anyone.
Why you can do it, there's a real thing like this.
Well, it could be that we're locked because of, you know, IT or IT.
To pay for it.
Right, just to pay, yeah. As far as a contamination issue goes, I think. That's, that's up to whoever buys the lot, you know, I mean, it could be contamination on any of the other three lots, you just don't know. I mean, so.
What three buildings they originally, and what is the hey barn, what is what's barn, what is the scale shit?
I don't remember results.
Hey, the maps of it to house.
Scale shows right across.
Or in public comment, I'm just gonna read out this letter from. Looch Apartments and Mini Storage dated four, four, twenty-two. Received at the town April seventh, twenty twenty-two. Please read at four thirteen meeting. Dear Planning Board, I am in favor of TNT Mountain Investments to subdivide the property across from my shopping center at one sixty-five Main Street. Sincerely, Herb Looch owner. At this time, would any other member of the public like to speak?
So I'll make motion, we close public.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any further discussion on this application for tonight? Paul?
I think we need to continue this to a date and time specific, or. Until Carol could have a chance to look at and see if there's anything in the town records that we should be aware of prior to approving this. I don't have a problem with it, but I, I would like to know if there's something that we should be looking at or, or be made aware of prior to doing this. Because we find out after it just.
Well, I guess. The board's already rejected it, subdivision substantially similar.
We don't know that till we go through and find out why.
Find out why, right?
Yeah, it's kind of.
I don't want to jump to conclusions with that.
It's difficult to tear it out. On what's in there, I mean, I've just skimmed it and it was not easy reading and.
Is there any time constraint if you're underneath to be able to get this done?
Never, never tell the contractor they're playing it time, right? Within reason, a couple of weeks or something's fine, I mean.
How long would it take you to go?
Regular meetings.
How long would it take you to go through what you think you have here and? Yeah.
I'm just asking.
I mean, I have this map, I'd have to, I'd have to take it to the state ones and have them scan it so they can email it to you. And then I have this box, so.
I mean, I think you need, you just need to look at it, I would think, being a player, take, take a look at the information. See what's, if, if you think it's going to affect this, then what, then.
Meanwhile, then that would, that would affect us subdividing this property, is if there's something in some deed that said it couldn't be subdivided, I mean, there's no other.
If a prior planning board made some. Some comments on this whole property as a whole, then we would want to know about it prior to, I would think, prior to making any rec, our recommendation.
Yeah, no, I can see that.
But if they haven't, or if they're not germane to it, then obviously we just.
We get a question on it. This property re-subdivided, the documents of the original, original planning board that looked at it would be a moot point, it's been changed. The abandoned sound of renewing, am I right, OJ? If you have these problems, you sell them, did modification, the first part was approved by the planning board, it's been all changed, changed over. That first, that first improvement, the first approval by the planning board at one point, it's been changed, superseded.
It wasn't approved.
It was approved with a lot of conditions.
But it's all been changed, it's sold over, different, given boundary, different set of lots, so that'd be a moot point, wouldn't it?
But we have a responsibility, I think.
We don't know what the previous application was.
I think we have a responsibility to look at the, what we have in our files.
Want to make any of the same mistakes, points.
Exactly.
So the conditions that were argued. With the previous subdivision application, you know, it'd be good for you to know, so you don't make the same.
And we may not agree with them, those.
Exactly, well, she said they might be so outdated that it's.
Right, but we need to know what they are, so that if, if there's a real important one, if there's anything important that we look at.
And I'm thinking that the, the, the app, the plot here, there's some changes that we talked about. So we can't prove this tonight anyway, because, but just to make sure we're on the same page. Things that I noted were, were, you were going to delineate wetlands, if any, on here?
Yeah, we'll, we'll flag wetland batteries, which are down closer to the river, and we'll, and we'll locate those on the plans.
Okay, minimum lot size would be listed somewhere around here for that.
Two point one.
In, in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the minimum lot size for that zone, and change the zone to Village Center.
Let's make sure.
We did change the zone, it's the way it is.
Change, change, the one zone is listed on the paper, we're not changing the zone, we're changing the wording on the paper, true. Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
And then, and then. We talked about further defining the responsibility for Cooper Mount Memorial Drive, which.
I'll dig into that.
If that book and volume number and plan number define it, I would just make a note.
Right.
Responsibility for Cooper Memorial Drive is further defined in book, law, plan.
By operating agreement in this place.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to spell it out, you don't have to cut.
Yeah, you don't want to buy paragraphs on there.
I just reference it.
Reference it.
I think if you're looking also at the. What type of a hammerhead or what type of access Ron wants for the fire department on two point two and two point three. You might want to look and try and have that done now versus later.
If he doesn't know what he's gonna build.
He knows what he's gonna build, can't have it put in.
Build it's.
Well, no, but I mean, he's still gonna need, he's gonna have access, he's got defined right now a fifty foot right away, so.
We don't know if he's gonna get a curb cut, and he may or may not get that.
Oh, but the right of way is not going out to the main road, the ones for two point two and two point three. The fifty foot right away comes off Cooper Memorial, takes a hard left and then stops. Now, actually, the arrow makes it look like it stops versus fifty feet, that's intended to go to the road, see the two little pins up there?
Oh, I thought it stopped right there.
No. It goes, it goes that way, just in case we can work some deal with DOT in a future day, if we can, we can, then it becomes.
So it currently goes all the way out there.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I thought it, that's my mistake, I thought it stopped.
It wants to say you can put the right way between the two lots, you have access only one.
If, if that's the case, if you're indicating that there's fifty foot right away, you're, you're coming out onto the road, there needs to be a, something on the plan that has. The DOT has to weigh in on this or approve this, because this is a new easement off of the road. I mean, you, you can't just draw on a plan that you're gonna put easement there without DOT.
We can put a note, another note on the plan that says right of way shown between these two lots. It doesn't have DOT approval, may not be possible, something like that, and that way.
I don't know, then, there needs to be something, because this is showing a, showing that it's on a plan, so someone's gonna say, that's on a plan. He must have had permission to do that.
Right.
And.
Like I said, if we don't show it and then we subdivide it.
I don't think it can be on the plan if, if you don't have permission, personally, but. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want to approve a plan that had a easement out onto a state road without having DOT saying it was okay. First.
Mr. Pro, you only put pending DOT approval.
Right, it doesn't show, it doesn't show the curb cut, it shows solid line where Cooper Memorial shows a curb cut.
Yeah, obviously, we're leaving this space.
Yeah.
If you think about it.
To try.
Show on the lot.
No, I think it's good, yeah, I mean. I can't even try until I know what the use is, right, and I can't, yeah, so, I mean, kind of stuck.
Cooper Memorial Drive doesn't have a, I mean, it has a solid line there, too.
Right.
We, I think, I mean, I think generally speaking, it's a pretty small potato, and we could put a note on the plan that says that that right away hasn't been approved by DOT.
There's something.
I'm fine with some kind of a note that's clear, I mean, I'm not trying to be vague, right, so.
Oh, yeah, I think just it takes the ambiguity out of it, that's.
Yeah, we can even put a note on the plan, I mean, we could put an error right to that spot, but, you know, this area has not been approved for DOT curb cut, you know, to, whatever, we can do something.
Future, future DOT.
Yeah, we could, we could work something out, so it's, oh, yes, okay.
Buildable area on lot two point one.
Right, yeah.
They're all gonna change, you can update setbacks.
Right.
Um, the other thing you might want to do.
Well, you're gonna say whether the buildable area on two point one includes the easement area or not.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we're clear.
So does this, the other question I had or comment is. On lot two point one, where it says easement area for benefit of Southern Peaks Development LLC volume. Right there, does that speak to the use of this parking area? I mean, is that, is that the? Is that the easement that speaks to the use of this parking area, do you know?
I can't say that I know that, it's pretty, it's a pretty long wordy. Agreement that goes back and forth between these two properties, so. I can say that regardless, I mean, and like I said, I don't, I don't know what the next, what the person is trying to do, so I don't know if that's pertinent or not. I mean, I know, I know for sure that there's enough, there's enough buildable area outside that easement area that. Way above, you know, what's required anyway, so that'd be someone else to, to fight over, I guess, or.
It should just, because it's part of that law.
Sure.
If, if there's, that is a, a restriction on that lot, it should be defined.
Okay.
As part of this plan, I would think. Because it, as part of one of the checklist, it says. What's it say, the easement restrictions, so that's, this is an, this is an easement or a restriction on the property.
But that's a big, long document, do you want it on the plan, or do you just want the, the reference to it?
Just a reference.
The reference to it already says, has the volume page to the look for it, so.
Right, but I don't know, if, if that's the one that refers to this parking lot.
Okay, well, it's in that same area, but I mean, I could, I could check it out.
Check that, make sure.
I could try to make it more clear, if there's, if it's, if it's confusing, I'll, I'll eyeball it and see if we can get it better.
You can do, look at that written in your office.
Yeah.
For, for P, they look your copy.
Yeah, we go, yeah, no, we, we have account with Grafton, we, we get into stuff all the time, so.
Yeah, just.
I just, as me, to be quite honest, I haven't been as concerned about that, because this might be coming off my plate, you know, I, I've really looked at this, you know, I, I'm looking at this side, so. Not trying to be evasive, just, I just don't know, you know, so.
We just need to identify everything on, that, that's possibility, I think.
Okay, so we'll try to fine tune this a little bit. Got a lot of notes.
Are we gonna put this back on next?
Do you want to do two weeks, we want to do the first meeting in May?
Well, I guess.
Can you, can you get your survey to make these changes?
Make these changes as fast as you tell me to make them. I'd rather not, you know, that goes, if we, if we, the sooner the better, within reason, right, so might as well just, if we can do it, let's just do it.
Do it two weeks.
So it's twenty-seventh.
We could be glad, we could always.
Yeah.
You'll need to have it to me, the twenty-seventh is a Wednesday, and I'm supposed to try to get the packets ready for people by Friday before.
So what's the next available day, if not the twenty-seventh, not to push everybody?
The second Wednesday in May, yeah.
Yeah, we'll try for the twenties, we'll make twenty-seven work.
Okay.
There's not, there's, we really don't have that much to do on sites, and take two hours to flag the wetlands, bring the GPS down. Pick them up, and then we get the test pits, and that's.
Just comment to his end. Carol, not only will. Carol, not only will send that information to us that she finds about it, she'll send that to you as well.
I assume.
So if, if, if you have any questions.
If something jumps out.
Two weeks may not be enough for you. You may want to do a little bit of research before, I suppose.
Well, if he doesn't make it, Kenny Ochs, that's for him.
Yeah, let's, let's try to make it. I mean, I'm, I'm. Alright, my gut is we're not, I'm not gonna find a smoking gun over there, but, but whatever. If we do, then we can pull the plug and we can make a new plan, you know, I'm, I'm flexible. I think if we wait another two weeks, another month, now it's gonna jump the drag, right?
Quite a lot slower.
And then if we need, yeah, yeah, summer goes fast.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
If you look up this, this restriction on the D, the Grafton. You might want to send this, send a copy to Carol.
Sure.
So if they say that much time, you're not gonna want to do.
You're talking about on the easement area on lot two dash one.
Correct.
Okay, send it, Carol.
She already had it, that much time, let's save.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you have the other two things to.
Yes. Yeah, we, we got, we can get those.
Yeah, I looked in our.
Carol, I have arrows on my plan.
It's not something.
It's all good.
Well.
Alright, have a mission, everything? Can we cover everything?
So I, can I go over what I have? My bad list, I'll just run around my plan. So we've got the wrong setbacks, because we had the wrong district label. We'll fix those to five, ten, fifteen. The wetland boundary, I'll, I'll put the test pit locations we did for environmental work on the plan. From Waterman, that's comment, Cooper Memorial. So we're gonna, we're gonna do the research on the Cooper Memorial Drive. Maintenance agreement, plus we're gonna check on this easement area for the development. And then we're gonna get all that info to Carol. And then, uh, let's see what else I got here. Lot size, change to the Village Center District, throw, show the minimum lot size on the plan. And then reference agreement, same thing. I think I could.
Okay, and then buildable. Buildable just area in every lot.
Yeah, absolutely. Those are, yeah, builders, make it adjusted for everything, because the setbacks are gonna change. Yeah.
Yeah.
And a note that the right of way is subject to the DOT approval.
Yep.
Or that section of the right of way.
Yeah.
Right away in Main Street.
Yeah, we'll make that real clear, so there's no, I mean, like I said, I'm not trying to, we all know it, I'm not, there's nothing we're changing here, so.
Right.
I was thinking, I was thinking with your hammerhead thing too, I mean. Theoretically, that it would be pretty easy to put a hammerhead in there, because we already have the two parts of it, right? So. But I think, I think that would be probably be better left to, to see what happens here theoretically, you know, so. But I think there's room to do it without, without, you know, we'd still be way above the buildable space, right? So.
Is your motion to continue this hearing till April twenty-seventh?
So move. You put that.
Sorry, so Paul, move for a second. All in favor?
I.
I. Anyone?
Hammerhead in the, put a hammerhead in the, uh, as part of a setback.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's April twenty-seventh, same time. Good. Thank you. That's a crap on my surveyor now.
Any public participation? What business?